Meetings called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jesse, can you take roll call, please?
Member Douglas and Member Wolfher both have an excused absence. For the record, they provided notice of their absence this evening. Member Grigsby?
Present.
Member Rivera?
Present.
And Member Lantry also provided notice of his absence this evening. Member Carney?
Present.
And Member Aquindo?
Present.
We have a quorum, sir.
Has everybody read the minutes of last week's meeting?
Minutes of May 17th.
And we get a motion?
A move that we approve the minutes of May 17th, 2022.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes 4-0, minutes approved.
Good afternoon. I'm Abraham Fogel, Senior Planner for the Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting this item. So our case number is CDA 22-00002. As you mentioned, it's ordinance number 2022-37. It is a Land Development Code Amendment to change the sign regulations. The purpose for this amendment is an effort to preserve the aesthetic beauty and ambience of the city, and also the City Council has determined the need to update and revise the city's sign regulations. It will address concerns related to signage on vehicles, and it also updates Section 3.16.6, establishing exceptions to this provision. So, under Section 3.19.6...
Can you move up a little bit and speak up so we can hear you, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Chair, can we have the ordinance title called out with the case name for the record?
Subject, LDC Amendment to Article 3 Zoning Regulation, case number CDA 22-0002, Land Development Code Amendment.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll start off with this slide, which covers the language that we're adding. Under Section 3.19.6, we have the signs that are prohibited in the city, so we are including number 13, which reads "Signs attached to or placed on any vehicle subject to the following exceptions: A) if the vehicle is parked on private property, on an approved paved surface, and within the confines of a building, or in some manner which provides for effective screening, so as to not allow the sign or signs on the vehicle to be viewed from any public street; B) any vehicle upon which is placed or attached a sign identifying the company store, firm, or office, or its principal products or services, if such vehicle is one which is operated during the normal course of business of the company, store, firm, or office, provided, however, that no such vehicle shall be routinely parked in a location where it serves as or constitutes additional signage; and C) buses, taxi cabs, and similar common carrier vehicles which are licensed or certified in accordance with applicable law in any commercial vehicle authorized under Section 3.20.8 of the Land Development Code. The other change that we're doing here, which last slide was the language we were adding, we have a small strike through in the same section under number 8. Any signs of any signs of a portable or movable nature except for, and we're striking for vehicle signs and, so that it is clear that that is prohibited, and we've provided the exceptions in the previous slide. This falls into our growth management part of our strategic plan goals, which is to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for all generations, and we are recommending approval of ordinance 2022-37. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
So just for clarification for the Commission, this is a Land Development Code Amendment. These are the amended revisions to the code that are being presented by staff for your feedback, and they're seeking that your approval to pass on is recommended to the council.
Okay. So this here is for all private homes, not anything beyond HOAs, where they are prohibited already. You're trying to pass this on to private homes, correct?
Essentially, the signage on vehicles that would create additional advertisement or signage, basically item A, saying you can have that on your vehicle as long as it's completely screened. Item B is a little bit more nuanced on where maybe, you know, you can think of your hardware store, maybe it has some pickup vans that might have the logo or something, but they're just tucked away, and they're not trying to create additional signage. And C refers to buses or taxis, which typically have some advertisement information.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So if you have like a food wagon or something that you bring it home every night to reload it and park it, and it's illegal.
Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager. So this amendment came about at the City Council due to the fact that there was a lot of vehicles parked along 13th Avenue visible permanently. So that came about because of that problem. Also, to answer your question, yes, this would apply to residential, any residential, but we're not implementing the HOAs. If the HOAs already prohibit them, we're not going to enforce that. If the HOAs allow them, we're not going to implement that either. But it's mainly for the commercial, in commercial roads, that they have them parked typically in empty lots for advertisement.
Okay. Because here says that residential properties also.
Yeah.
On a private driveway, it says private yard, has to be put away in a form that you can't see it from the street, correct?
Yes, yeah, and we would implement that, but if the HOA, and they are in private roads in a gated community, and it's a private road, that is not a public right of way.
The State Street has no HOAs.
If I can clarify, the language that's under Section 13, the underlying language, those are the exception circumstances upon which the vehicle could have signage, but as long as it adheres to A, B, and C's limitations, it would be consistent with the code?
Thank you for the clarification.
No, I totally get that, but that's why I'm questioning the same thing. I am an insurance sales person, and I happen to have, you know, insurance on the side of my vehicle and a magnet, and I am parked in my driveway on Massachusetts and 5th. And when people are driving up and down Massachusetts, they happen to see that because it's parked in the driveway. That would be an exception allowed or not allowed?
An exception allowed, if I'm not mistaken.
This is what always trips me up, because I am reading this, and I'm saying it's either an exception to it, or it is not allowed.
Because you're saying it is not allowed unless it's put away and not in the view of the public.
So it is...
So in the driveway, it's in the view of a public.
It is listed in the Section 3.19.6 of the prohibited signs, but there's 13 creates the exceptions to the prohibited sign section.
That's what I'm going to say, but manor and privacy effective screening, not allow the sign or signs on the vehicle to be viewed from any public street, being an exception, it can be viewed.
It can be viewed.
I know a lawyer wrote this.
And then the one that's going to write us up is code enforcement.
Yes, the code enforcement is there, and it's going to enforce that.
But it sounds like they're not. If I, like my example, I'm on Massachusetts and 5th, and I all of a sudden have that sign, and I'm in the driveway, that's not a code breaking.
If it's private, if it's private property in an approved paved surface and within the confines of the building, you are exempt.
In the confines of the building, in my garage with the door down so nobody can see it.
Or in some manner which provides the effective screening.
Blocking, gotcha. All right, see? Got to really, really, really read it over and over, all right.
You got to dig down.
Yeah, because like if I have it in my yard, my yard is grass, I have my trailer that's wrapped with my business logo, my real estate logo, and it would be illegal. I'd have to tuck it away in the corner of the yard.
Yeah, slap your magnets off every night and remember to put them on every morning. If you've got the frozen yogurt little truck that's all decorated up, and it's in my driveway, and I'm restocking it and going to take it out next morning, nope, you got to go pay somewhere to store it or put it.
Okay.
All right, got it.
Any more comments, Phil?
No.
Okay. I will open it up to the public. If anybody in the public has any comments. There's no comments from the public. We'll close it. Any other comments? Okay. Can anybody comfortable making a motion?
I move to deny.
I second that.
See if I get this right. LDC Amendment to Article 3 Zoning Regulations, case number CDA 22-00002 of the Land Development Code Amendment.
I'll second it.
Your motion is to recommend denial as written.
Right, denial as written.
I think it's an outreach also.
All three of us.
Motion to deny?
Yep.
Have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Let's clarify. We had a second to the motion, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Carney, okay. There we go.
Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
The motion was to deny, it was seconded, and all the votes were in favor of the motion to deny.
This item is scheduled for this coming up Thursday at the City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Second order of business would be ordinance number 2022-30, DRC Case ANX 22-00005. And I believe we have two more that we could view at the same time and then make a final vote separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and those would be ordinance number 2022-32, DRC Case Number CPA 22-0006.
3 zeros, 00006.
Four zeros.
Yeah, four zeros, excuse me. Yes, sir.
And ordinance number 2022-33, DRC Case Number ZMA 22-00007. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, Board. My name is Tisha Manning, Associate Planner in Community Development, and I will be presenting the annexation, the comp plan amendment, and the zoning amendment for the St. Cloud Marketplace case, and those are ordinance numbers 2022-30, 2022-32, and 2022-33. This is approximately .254 acres of land, and it's located south of East Earl O'Bronson, east of Hickory Tree Road, and north of Live Oak. The property is contiguous to city limits. It abuts the city on the southern, eastern, and western property boundaries. The existing county, future land use is low-density residential, and the existing county zoning is agricultural development and conservation. The proposed future land use for the city is commercial, with a proposed zoning of highway business. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas, and there is no adverse impact on city facilities. This is just the location of the parcel. You'll see there that it's a very small piece of property that is going to go along with another development in that area, so they're just trying to annex this property in to be included in their actual development. That is the future land use. You'll see everything surrounding it is commercial, as well as highway businesses, the zoning. This is in line with our strategic plan goal of growth management, and DRC staff recommends approval of this ordinance, and likewise, we ask that the Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-32 and 2022-33. Do you have any other questions, Ms. Carney?
Anybody have any questions for her?
No.
And the applicant is available.
Will the applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Sir, good afternoon. Carlos Perro, Kimley Horn, 189 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1000, Orlando, Florida, 32801. Here is the applicant representing St. Cloud Marketplace LLC, RRB Partners, available for any questions you may have. I had nothing to add.
Thank you very much. I will be opening it for the public. If anybody has any questions and has filled out a form, you can come up and state your name and address. No public comments. We will be closing it to the public. Any other questions from the, between ourselves?
No.
We're all good?
Just suggest to the Commission now that to take each item from the agenda one at a time for clarification for the record.
Okay, we are going to be voting on DRC Case Number 2022-30, ordinance number ANX 20-00005, voluntary annexation.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance number 2022-30, based on 16 fines within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second? Ms. Carney seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nobody opposed. Next case will be DRC Case Number CPA 22-0006, ordinance number 2022-32, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 2022-32, based on 16 fines within the Land Development Code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next DRC case is ZMA 22-0007, ordinance number 2022-33, Zone Map Amendment. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to make approval of ordinance number 2022-33, based on 16 fines within the Land Development Code.
Mr. Rivera motions to approve. Any second?
Second.
Second has been approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Next coming up is DRC Case ANX 21-0007, 2022-38, and there'll be three also on this item, which would be DRC Case Number CPA 21-00018, ordinance number 2022-39, and PUD 21-0007, ordinance number 2022-40.
Good evening, Board. My name's Peter Martin. I'm Senior Planner here at the City of St. Cloud Community Development Department. I'll be presenting the annexation and comprehensive plan amendment cases. This action is prompted by the applicant with Live Oak Estates. The case is entitled Live Oak Estates Phase 4 and 5. At present time, the applicant has indicated that they're going to just go with one phase, but we're discussing here the annexation, case number ANX 21-0007, and the accompanying comp plan amendment CPA 21-00018. The annexation ordinance is 2022-38, and the comprehensive plan amendment ordinance is 2022-39. This is land that is located south of East Earl O'Bronson Memorial Highway and east of Hickory Tree Road. It abuts the Thompson Grove subdivision on the east, which is in the city, so it is contiguous on the eastern side. It also abuts phases 1 through 3, that's also still in the county of the Live Oak Estates. So this is the final Phase 4 area. It's 110.77 gross acres, like I mentioned, but that includes a significant amount of the Live Oak Lake, actually, and the acreage that is land is plus or minus 72, I believe is 72.54 acres. This is a voluntary annexation request by the representative of the property owner, and let me just move on to the next slide here. So annexation has to meet the requirements of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, which just means that it has to be contiguous and reasonably compact, which this is. It is adjacent, like I said, to the city limits. The current future land use designation is low-density residential within the county. The existing zoning is agricultural development and conservation. That's one zoning classification in the county, which is compatible with our agricultural zoning. And I hit the wrong side. There we go. Okay, so the proposed flu is low-density residential within the city. The county's allows for up to eight units per acre, but the, well, the part that's medium density, and this is the low density is four units within the city. It's compatible with the surrounding areas, and there are no adverse impacts to city So you can see the, it's that yellow area on the future land use map next to the brown mixed use of the Thompson Grove development that's adjacent on the east. Oops, sorry, let me go back. There we go. Strategic Plan Goal Growth Management is to create a vibrant, progressive, and diverse community through sustainable planning for all generations, and the annexation and comp plan amendment meet these goals and other goals of the comprehensive plan. DRC staff recommendation is approval, and we're also recommending that the County Commission grants approval of both of the, I mean, I'm sorry, not County Commission, the City Planning Commission Land Planning Agency grant approval of these two items. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Does anybody have any questions for him?
You had mentioned something about conservation, that it's part of this land already is, has some conservation land, so if it's going to be no longer conservation land, is there conservation land established somewhere else to make up for that within the city or the area that we're looking at?
Okay. Let me go to the staff report for the comp plan amendment here. Okay.
Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager. The conservation portion, that is the designation of the zoning from the county. The county agricultural zoning, it is, let me have this real quick. I don't know exactly what it's called, but it's called agricultural development and conservation. That's the name of the zoning. That does not, it just means that what we will consider an agriculture, that's their agriculture in the county. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's strictly for conservation purposes. In the zoning, in the rezoning application, we're going to discuss the open space requirements and the conservation requirements that are required by the zoning that they are requesting, and those will be discussed with the zoning presentation.
Okay, thank you. And there's a portion of it in the water. Can you explain that a little, a portion of this land? Is that, it just happens to be, right?
For clarification, I want to clarify a couple points, and I will answer that question, ma'am. So first of all, the county's future land use designation is a mixture of low-density residential and mixed-density residential. So the low density is four units per acre. The mixed, the medium density can be eight units per acre, but it's going to all low-density within the city. So some of it's going from eight units per acre maximum gross density to four units per acre, and most of it is already four units per acre. There is none of it with a future land use designation of conservation, like Ms. Segarra mentioned. That's the zoning portion of it, and that's not pertaining to either of these two actions. So in terms of the boundaries, the annexation includes part of the lake. We don't actually give future land use designations to lakes on our map, so on our map, it's going to show as water. Any other questions? Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah, that's fine. And then the impact, though, those are always just the questions I have whenever we say there is no impact. There is whenever there's going to be all this additional building. So how are we addressing that?
Yes, understood. So what we're talking about now is the annexation and the comp plan amendment. So in terms of the gross density of four units per acre, it's not going to, I mean, that's our lowest-density residential. So there will be impacts of the development, but there's not going, not expected to be impacts on facilities that can't be handled through the PMP/FMP, which is a preliminary master plan, final master plan, but that's part of the rezoning case, so that's going to be handled with a separate presentation, and you can get into more details at that point. And so you can look at that and say, oh, well, there's some aspects of that development that might be dense, but the overall density is all we're looking at in terms of the comp plan amendment that's before you at this moment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Does the applicant would like to come up and speak?
My name is Brock Altifer. I'm with Osceola Engineering. Address is 1003 Florida Avenue, St. Cloud. We're in agreement with staff's report and staff's recommendations. As he was stating, right now, this is in Osceola County. They allow eight units per acre through their future land use. We're taking it down to four, so this has a... So this has a net negative impact on the community from a development standpoint. Just want to clarify that point. But I'm available for any questions that you have.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. We'll be closing it for that part and opening it to the public. If anybody in the public wants to speak and has filled out a card, you may come up and speak now.
We have not filled out a card.
Okay, you can fill the card after you speak, as long as you just fill it out and give it to the inmate there.
Just for clarification, the commission right now is entertaining Agenda Items E and F, which are ordinance number 2022-38 and 2022-39. The final component, G, is going to be presented as the final part, and that deals with the zoning and the PUD.
If you want to speak up on the zoning, it'll be after this. If you want to speak up on the annexation, it'll be now.
And comprehensive plan.
Yes, you may. You'd be kind enough to state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Ryan Anthony. I live at 2160 Baroque Boulevard. And same, my wife-
Angela Silva, and live in the same address.
Yep, so we live in the community that Pulte just finished developing that butts up next to this. But, and forgive us and please have patience, we've never been to a city council meeting before, so I don't know if we-
Okay, that's fine. We still haven't been. This is the planning commission.
Oh, see, so I didn't even get the term right.
We ask crazy questions all the time. You're all right.
All right. So this portion we just went over right now is just to, just to propose the annexation for this, this land to be incorporated within city limits of St. Cloud.
Correct, changing it from county to city.
County to city. And when that's done, from what he just said, from what I understand, and just for clarification, that as far as density with the development of housing, it would go from eight units per acre down to four.
Let me, yeah, let me see if I can address. The planning commission's here to take feedback. It's not here to provide answers and guidance. But the two items that are currently before the commission are Item E and Item F. There's the voluntary annexation piece. The applicant is seeking voluntary annexation into the city. And then as a companion piece to that annexation would be the comprehensive plan amendment land use. Currently, with the county, the land use is low-density residential and medium-density residential county. The applicant is seeking for a low-density residential city designation, which they've provided as being at least in part less impactful than the current county land use. That's where we are at this time, just those two components.
Okay.
Okay? And those are the matters that are before the commission at this time.
They're not here to answer our questions, really. Do you have the card? We can, we need to fill out.
Just fill that out, okay. One is fine. Just put your names on both. Okay.
Is that all the questions?
Is that all the questions we have from the public? Okay, we will be closing it to the public. Any more questions from the committee between ourselves that you need answered? Okay, we'll be taking a vote on DRC case number ANX 21-0007, ordinance number 2022-38. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-38 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
Mr. Rivera motioned. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Carney has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 4-0. Next case, DRC case CPA 21-00018, ordinance number 2022-39. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-39 based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I have a motion from Mr. Rivera. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ms. Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 4-0. Now we will be hearing DRC case number PUD 21-0007, ordinance number 2022-40, application PUD Plan Unit Development Zoning Amendment Preliminary and Final Master Plan.
Good evening. Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager for the City of St. Cloud. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the last piece of the two previous presentations. This is the rezon or the request for a plan unit development. The property, the ordinance number is 2022-40. The total area is 110.77 acres. The property is located south of East Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway and east of Hickory Tree Road. The applicant is, has submitted a preliminary, preliminary master plan and a final master plan combined. Their recommendation from staff is approval with conditions. As it was stated previously, the proposed future land use designation for this property is low-density residential, which is means a maximum of four dwelling units per acre. The current zoning is agricultural development and conservation on the county, and the proposed zoning is the residential PUD through the city. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas, and there is no adverse impact into the city's facilities. It meets the strategic goals of growth management, and this is a layout of the proposed plan development unit with the residential PUD. So the property is going to be developed as a single phase. There is an extension to the existing Live Oak Estates Division to the east. It's compatible as condition with the existing Live Oak Estates Faces One, Two, and Three. The lots are approximately three, as small as 37, 40 square feet and as narrow as 34 feet. The homes are proposed to be one, two, and three stories high and between 1,800 through 3,500 square feet total. The existing amenities will be available to residents in the new development, and it will be incorporated into the Live Oak Estates Home Owners Association, and they're going to have access, direct access to that, to that property as well. The total acreage is 110.77 acres. The total dwelling units proposed are 264 dwelling units. The gross density is 3.65 acres. The net residential acreage is 27.85. They are proposing less than the maximum density required for LDR. LDR allows a maximum of four dwelling units per acre, and the gross residential density is 3.65 acres. There are some details into the property. The property is required to provide 20% of open space, which translates to a total of 14.51 acres. And the applicant has provided a total of 24.90%. With this, a total translates to a total of 18.06 acres. The number of open space tracks will be amenitized and paved to have access into the tracks along with potential open space tracks. Not all tracks listed in the proposed PMP and FMP included in the proposed open space of 18.06 acres have the required amenities. In order for that acreage of any track to count as open space, it needs to be amenitized accordingly to the code and provide sidewalks and connectivity. There is a requirement mitigate mitigation per, or Land Development Code that requires a minimum of 1,551 trees. And the trees provided into, into the plan right now is 405 trees. An additional of 1,046 trees must be provided to meet the requirements of Section 8.3.1. It is because of these pending issues that staff recommends approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. There are a total, I believe, of 15 conditions of approval listed in the staff report. Currently, the applicant is working with staff to address those comments. And the applicant has been informed of those comments listed in the staff report and comments all the way from one to, I just want to get the right number. 15, yes, I was right. 15 comments in total in the staff report. Those comments will need to be addressed prior to the adoption of the PUD. Be glad to answer any questions. Oh, sorry. This item, it is scheduled to be going, moving forward to city council in July 14. The applicant is here and will be glad to answer, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
You did say that there were three-story units?
They're proposing one, two, and three-story units, just as the first three phases.
Do you know how many of the 264 units will be three-story?
The applicant is here, can answer that question.
Thank you so much. May the applicant come up and state your name and address, please?
Hi, Brock Altifer with Osceola Engineering, 1003 Florida Avenue. To answer your question, there's not three-story units proposed. I think what we intended to do was include a maximum building height of 35 feet, and I think that got misinterpreted. No problem. But we're in agreement with staff. We've been working very closely with staff over the last several months to, to get the plan that you see in front of you today. We intend to continue to work closely with them to get a, a plan that is presentable to the city council. We've agreed to have the plan to them by Friday. So we're working through some minor issues, but I think what we would like to request today is a recommendation of approval to continue working with staff and to move forward. So I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have questions for the applicant?
The staff recommendations, as you said, the, I guess, as I'm reading them here, not that I know what staff has to do to get them through. Are they, they look minimal, like kind of math things, et cetera, right? So, so I think I would feel comfortable sending it without having to re-review, I guess. And thanks for the clarification. I see the layouts here of the two stories. So yeah, the three-story was a question. Thanks for that.
Just to clarify, the commission and staff is recommending approval with the adoption of the 15 conditions. Some categorized as minor, some categorized as major, but they're all in, within the staff report. Is that right?
Would that mean housing back there, Police Department? Is it going to be St. Cloud PD because it's getting incorporated with the city? That's a lot of houses.
Yeah, this is part of the joint planning agreement and also the service agreement that we have with Osceola County. The St. Cloud Police Department and the Fire Department are designated for this area already because of the existing Live Oak Estates Division that is already there or is being completed. So this service will be extended to this phase as well.
So they have been asked, and everything's been fine with that?
Yes, the Police Department and the Fire Department are part of the Development Review Committee that review the proposed plan, and they make comments and recommendations, and they have recommended approval.
So just, Dagmarie, just one more time, that the major conditions that you all are asking for, you feel really comfortable that those will be satisfied?
We are continuing working with the applicant, and we are expecting the applicant to fulfill those conditions listed. If the event that a consent is not reached or we don't agree, then the staff will, will either table the application to move forward into city council until they are resolved, or we will move forward with a different recommendation.
And it, I think we have the 15 on here, if I found it in the right spot. Can you tell us which one is the major concern?
So the majors are listed from number...
From after number nine, please.
After number nine, yes.
We'll start with number 10.
Yes, beginning on number 10 is open space. As I mentioned in the presentation, there are some areas that have not been amenitized. Our code requires that an open space in order to count as open space be amenitized with sidewalks, with, you know, equipment, you know, whatever the applicant wants to do. Sidewalks, just some areas that the applicant did not provide sidewalks. The tree mitigation, the calculations, that needs to be resolved prior to the city council. The on-street parking, since we're going over this, I want to clarify that the on-street parking comment has gone away. The applicant has responded accordingly. So the number 13 in the major, listed as major, it does not longer apply. The applicant needs to finish the, the submitted of the transportation impact analysis and any stormwater, storm for, stormwater pond calculations, if they need it, they need to be provided to the, to staff.
That's quite a lot of trees that are still missing. Do they know by when they're proposing to have most of that done?
They are supposed to submit a plan by Friday. We're going to sit down with them to discuss the proposed changes and how they are addressing the tree mitigation. The Land Development Code does provide some language that would allow them to address that issue in different ways, whether it's to contribution or to the actual planting of the trees.
Yeah, that's kind of a big miss. It was almost a double. Thousand, two thousand.
Any other questions?
Is there a clubhouse in the Willow Swim Pool? That's a lot of houses.
I'm sorry?
Is there a facility for like a clubhouse?
I believe that the clubhouse and the facilities are going to be shared with the existing three phases, the clubhouse and the cabana, if I'm not mistaken.
We're also, sorry, we're also proposing another pool amenity area in one of the large open space tracks and gazebos throughout. There's going to be walking trails. We've got a detailed breakdown of the proposed amenities within the site plan. I'm not sure what sheet it's on, if you can, if you've got that loaded.
No, that's-
Okay. Well, we do have a detailed amenity plan that shows where gazebos are going, where the pool facility is going, where the passive parks are going. So this will be a heavily amenitized site. So the, the pool is going to go in this general area. There's a big gas main that runs through here, so we're not allowed to put any kind of like, like vertical improvements. But this will be a large playfield and open play area for children. Down here, there's going to be a little viewing area along this lake with a fountain in the lake for passive viewing. We're proposing a small gazebo over, near Live Oak Lake with paths that go to that gazebo for viewing of Live Oak Lake. We've got several paths around the other lakes in the community. So it's a, it's a heavily amenitized site.
Is it going to be a pet-friendly community?
I'm sure the HOA will install pet waste stations along the way. But I mean, I'm not exactly certain what the term pet-friendly means, but I'm sure it'll be pretty standard with residential subdivisions.
Not every subdivision has pet spots where they can get trash bags and stuff for their pets and stuff.
Okay, got you. I'm sure that'll be part of the, what the HOA includes.
And they're all single-family dwellings too, right?
These are all single-family, yes. These are pretty consistent with the adjacent Live Oak Estates community, mostly 50-foot and 60-foot front loads. But with this phase, the developer and builder is introducing a new product. It's going to be rearload product. So 34-foot wide and 40-foot wide rearload, bungalow-style product, which is being built all throughout Osceola County. It's been a very successful product.
So basically more sidewalks instead of garages and driveways?
Right. It's kind of front porch living instead of backyard living.
Entry through the alleyway.
Right, right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be closing this and opening it to the public. If any in the public has filled out a form and would like to speak. Okay. I'm waiting on them to see if they... Would you like to speak? Oh, you're okay with anything?
The gentleman-
I want to ask a few things, but I don't understand if I can ask-
The chairman's calling for public comment. You can provide public comment for the commission to consider if you wish to give them your comments.
If you dislike or disapprove or think of something-
Or staff.
If they have something, they may be able to answer for you.
State our names again.
Yes, please.
Ryan Anthony, 2160 Baroque Boulevard.
Angela Silva. Angela Silva, same address.
Same address. Yep. Just, uh, there are a lot of giant 100-year-old oak trees on that area.
Beautiful.
Those are just going to be bulldozed over as far as, that's not, I mean.
And they plant, uh, trees, but they are small and they're going to take forever to grow. And we have a lot of wild, like, animals there, and it's sad, just that, so.
Just disappointed in that, but we understand the development and, and the progress. We're glad to see it's heavily amenitized and that there's green spaces preserved. But, uh, yeah, we'll see. You know, there's every kind of beautiful species. Bald eagles there and bobcats and wild turkeys and all that stuff, but the, but they do have some. You would think, I know, I know they just developers just can't do this, I don't think, but there, there's some huge oak trees there, and it would be nice if they could just leave those.
We can ask them if they are planning to keep any of them or what are they planning to do?
That'd be wonderful. I appreciate it.
He's behind you. He will answer you.
We can see the plan where they're, they're not going to be there.
Yeah.
So, but anyways, that's our, is that our only?
Yeah, that was my concern. And another thing is, I see that the lots are smaller, so they're going to be townhouses or something like that, and so.
I didn't see any, hear about any townhouses in the plan, but.
Thank you.
Will the applicant like to answer?
Yes. Uh, we are not proposing townhomes in this development. They're our rearload product, and that's probably what you're assuming is the townhome, but that is not townhome. Everything is, uh, single-family detached. In terms of the trees, it's very early in the process to try to save trees at this point. When we go through with final design and we do the stormwater management system, the state has very strict rules that typically requires you add a whole bunch of fill to a site. And when you add a whole bunch of fill, it's hard to save trees. I, I can say what we do is, once we get to that step in the process, which is still several months from now when we get to final engineering, we do try to save as many trees as we can, but it's not always feasible because of the state's stormwater requirements.
Thank you so much.
Which is just a little bit early in the process to be able to say at this point.
We, we understand. Thank you for.
And just to clarify, they're single-family attached?
Everything here is single-family detached.
Detached.
Yep. So they're all separate. They're, they're individual lots with individual homes.
Any other questions from the public? We'll be closing the public comments. Any question among us? Okay. We'll be preparing for a vote on PUD, DRC case number PUD21-0007, ordinance number 2022-40. Do I have any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval with conditions listed by staff, based on the 16 findings of the Land Development Code.
Mr. Rivera motion to approve, second?
Second.
Mr. Griesby, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes four zero, sir.
Sure.
Um, this item is scheduled to go in front of the city council in July 14.
July 14.
Uh, yeah, thank you. And, uh, and it's a large-scale amendment, which will be transmitted to the state.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jesse?
So our next meeting will be July 19th, 2022, 6:00 PM, in the same location. Um, and I also just have a couple of little, um, items to mention. I mentioned them at the, the last Planning Commission meeting. Just a reminder for those who haven't turned in their disclosure form, it's due July 1st to the Supervisor of Elections Office. And also anyone that is interested in the training in Orlando, the Planning Commissioner Workshop on September 9th or 6th, I believe it is. If you could just let me know by July 23rd if you, if you want to be in attendance or not.
Is that the one at the Hilton?
You're correct. Mm-hmm.
Is it the 6th or the 9th? I have it on the calendar. It's the 6th.
It might be the 6th, yeah. I think it is the 6th.
Yep, it's the 6th, Tuesday.
And then the Plant Edison, um, those trainings are due, the online trainings are due July 31st.
Ms. Jesse, uh, we might have to call them because the link you gave everybody hasn't been working. None of them have been able to log in, so we need to try to get them to reset it so they can get back in.
Were you in one time before, and you can't get back in?
I couldn't get in since the beginning.
When I did call after you gave me that, I was in, and it's been fine so far.
I did the same thing. After I called, they reset.
Okay, good. I can provide the phone number to everyone, just in case, yeah. Yep, and that's all I have.
Okay. Motion to close?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you for, thank you, everybody, for coming. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Lord.
I invited over our new zoning manager, Josh DeBree. He just started with the city about three weeks ago.